Please let's call the meeting of the Nurey Planning Board to order for March 21st, 2023. Attendance and determination of quorum. We have three members present. And since Gooch is not here, we can appoint Randy as a voting member this evening. We have a quorum.
Do we do that one this? Yeah. There's only.
Actually, you only need a.
Two.
I don't really need two people yet.
Yeah. Would you like to? I don't know how, do you elevate someone up?
Yeah.
Well, first, first, we have to check on this guy. You caught up?
Yes.
You are?
Yes.
Okay. So I would like to appoint Randy as a voting member of the Nurey Planning Board this meeting. Minutes of the prior meeting for February 15th, 2023. I would like to entertain a motion to accept the minutes of the February 15th, 2023 Planning Board minutes.
I move to accept the minutes as presented.
I think he would. I'm saying, yeah.
Okay, I'll second him.
Okay. Any further discussion? There are none, all in favor? Motion passes. Thank you. Business.
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
Yes, sir.
On 2/22, on February 22nd of 2023, the Code Enforcement Officer forwarded a piece of correspondence addressed to the board and received by the town, by U.S. Postal Service. The CEO forwarded a copy of this correspondence to the board members for our review and preparation prior to this meeting. Two board members made comments via email addressed to all board members related to the above-mentioned correspondence. The first being from John Guthier on 2/22/23 and the second being from Bruce Pierce on 2/23/23. Therefore, to comply with the Freedom of Access Act and due process, the minutes of this meeting need to include, one, a copy of the letter submitted to the board by David J. Powell dated 2/18/23; two, a copy of an email sent by John Guthier, Chairman of the Board, addressed to all board members and dated 2/22/03; and third, a copy of an email sent by Bruce Pierce, Vice Chair of the Board, addressed to all board members and dated 2/23/23.
That's why I go down.
Well, it's a point of order. Those.
I have to bring, I'm gonna deliver.
Those three, three things need to be included as part of the minutes since this was a discussion that was held outside of an advertised board meeting.
You're welcome. Do you have your copies or do you need my?
No, I get my copies.
Okay. Randy? You're welcome. Mr. Applicant, would you like a copy here?
Oh, sure.
So is Chase Hill not coming?
Yes, let me sort this out. I have too many things going. Say what?
Is Chase Hill not coming?
No, they don't need to be here.
Oh, okay.
This is just a point of order.
This is a point of order before we get to the first order of business. And that is to include in this minutes today, the three pieces of correspondence that were subject to discussions outside of an advertised board meeting. I'm sorry?
When we get to that application, you can ask that question. Okay. Everything's been distributed.
My point of order is over with.
Thank you, sir. We can proceed. Business. Chase Hill Subdivision Amendment, Bill Fisher, applicant R-5/30.
Mr. Fisher's not coming. This was just to tidy up and the rolled plans for signature are there.
All right, so we need to sign that later.
Right after you review the application and deem it complete.
All right, well, where's that?
I think the application was deemed complete at the last meeting. And we went through the criteria. So what's left, if I remember correctly, Becky, please correct me if I'm wrong, was simply approving or denying.
Right, I think you need to.
And then sign the flats.
Well, he submitted a revised application, so I think you guys need to confirm that he did the corrections that you wanted. They're noted in the minutes. Don't wrinkle these, remember that. Registry does not like wrinkles.
That portal's maybe blocked reach far.
Yeah, we wish we had some.
Joel, does that have the 250-foot setback?
It shows a 250-foot setback and the greater setbacks from the property lines that were defined in the D E P, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the applicant has submitted, resubmitted his application with all the minor amendments and corrections made to it that the board requested in the last meeting.
Motion is made, do I hear a second?
A second, I looked it up with Ted.
The motion is moved and seconded. Any further discussion? There are none, all of us in favor. Motion carries.
So can I have each of you just come around since I've got this spread out and sign? I think there's three copies there, please.
All right, so.
You're the chairman today.
Date. Three, one.
Do we have to sign any other ones?
Yes.
The other, the other motion that still. Guys.
Real scary.
The other motion that still needs to be made is.
On this one.
The motion to approve the application.
Yeah, we got, yes. We're jumping ahead a little bit.
Don't wrinkle that.
Don't wrinkle it.
Don't wrinkle the plan.
But we gotta sign the other ones too, right?
Yes.
Do I have a small copy of that?
I do not have a small copy of that. But when it gets recorded, I can print it.
Okay.
Eleven by seventeen?
Yeah, I just, just to refer to what I do defining facts. Like, I just.
That won't get recorded until probably three weeks.
I don't think that, I just, I'll take a picture of the. I'll just put the name of the document and.
Okay.
Date and all that.
All through your sign?
All through your sign.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. It's all the same document.
Oh, these are all the same? Yeah, okay, so it's just duplicates. One for us, one for him. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, guys.
Is that application number, Becky?
Pardon me?
What's the application number for Chase?
Chase 23-274. Mr. Chairman, I move that the board formally approve the application number 23-274, the amendment to the Chase Hill subdivision.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? There are none, motion carries. We all had our hands all the way down. I'm sorry.
This is really sad.
I'm tired. Continued U D R, why not? I'm on the wrong one. It's a long day. And there flies after me. Sunday River Skiway Corporation, map R17 lot 1 and R13 lot 13, construction of a new Goplemeyer three-place lift on Merrill Hill with one new ski trail and new ski bridge of Morganite, off of Morganite Way or off?
It's supposed to be on, sorry.
On, okay. On Morganite Way.
The application's what I left in New Breeze Way.
Yeah. Sorry. Hello, on the street on the left.
Yeah, I don't, I think I'm out of copies. A copy of Sunday River.
We can get Bruce's.
For now? Okay. I've given out all the others. There you go. Oh, Bruce, you might be relieved. Nope. So Peter Roberts is here?
And I brought ink signature copies of the application and a check for the application fee. Full-size plans, if we need to take those out now or we can.
Not yet. I'll take the check. Yep.
I've got one for you. And then this two for Bruce. Do you want me to lay these out or just?
Are those a full size?
Full size.
Let's hang on to those for now. We have enough paper scooping around.
All right, so my name's Peter Roberts, here on behalf of Sunday River Skiway Corporation.
Point of order, you're jumping the gun.
Oh.
Oh, sorry.
There's a planning board, have you jurisdiction? Go down your check off list. Does the planning board have jurisdiction? What is the board jurisdiction to review this application?
Mr. Chairman, as defined in the unified development review ordinance, section one, general provisions, subsection C2A, act of quickability, site use, new buildings and structures, the planning board has jurisdiction and that is a motion.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor? All those in favor? Has the applicant provided proof of ownership, P and S agreement, or a letter of authorization to represent the property owner?
Mr. Chairman, another motion. In view of the fact that the applicant has submitted two quick claim deeds and one lease document with a combined page count of 48 pages and detailing over 28 parcels and 88 easements, I therefore move that the applicant annotate these documents to highlight the specific parcels and easements which apply directly to this application.
Second that.
Seconded, any further comments?
So Peter, please go through those.
Yep.
All those documents and highlight the areas that specifically apply to your application.
So it's moved and seconded, any? No, all in favor? Does any board member have any bias or conflict of interest?
Mr. Chairman, given that the board's vice chairman on 2/23/23 shared with the board members an email commenting on a letter submitted by and a letter to the applicant, and that in the email, the vice chair showed bias against the applicant, I therefore move that the vice chair be recused from any further review of this application.
It's been moved.
It's been moved.
It's been moved.
Okay, I'll second.
Well, you don't have to, but.
You don't have to. By our bylaws, you can second, you can go back to discussion, or you can choose, it can die on the floor.
Well, I think it's heated. I think we need everybody's opinion on it, you know? That's, I understand where you're coming from, certainly Ted, but, you know, I just think, you know, it's a heated topic based on the letter. And I think it's something that we should all discuss, keep it an open forum.
And the applicant, have you have an opinion on this matter?
Have you had a chance to read the letter?
I did not sit down and read the letter, so maybe I should do that first. I did read the letter, but not the email that was referenced.
Jolene, can I ask a quick question while they're discussing this whole thing? Do, do, do people like us ever get to ask any questions or?
Not, not at this time. It has to be the public hearing.
Yeah, we're just observing.
Correct, and for tonight.
Okay, that's what I want.
Can the press ask for a point of order?
I don't think so. But that's not up to me to make that decision, it's up to the board and they're reviewing something right now.
I believe that the member of the board in question made comments that demonstrate a certain bias, but I agree with Randy's comment that we need more discussion than just two members of the board. In the absence of Gooch tonight, I'd like to have Bruce participate in the conversation.
Let the minutes reflect that the applicant is not opposed to that and that the motion dies. Mr. Chairman, given that the board's chairman on 2/22/23 shared with the board an email commenting on a letter submitted by and a letter to the applicant, and that such email qualifies as a communication outside of an advertised board meeting and thus does not conform with the Freedom of Access Act and proper due process, I therefore move that the chair be recused from any further review of this application.
I will step down.
You're not the chair.
Oh.
This is, and it's Gooch.
Oh. He can't, he can't speak for himself.
No, but it's a matter of a vote that you'll regulate now.
Well, it has to be seconded first.
That's what I mean.
I'll second that.
So it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? So I guess for my own question, does that mean that Gooch has to be recused if we vote this from this discussion or from future?
The motion was that the, as for the previous motion, which died.
Yeah.
That the individual be recused because of inappropriate discussions outside of an advertised board meeting. In the previous motion, which died, the motion was never seconded and the applicant voiced no adverse opinion as to having that individual, yourself, remain on the board for the review of the application.
For the review of the application.
For the entire application. This current motion deals with the chairman of the board who also made an inappropriate comment outside of an advertised board meeting in response to an arbitrary letter. This motion, however, was seconded and therefore is now open to discussion.
So my, so my question is, is.
If, if the motion carries, then the chairman will be recused from any further review of this application.
Further review. Okay, so that means he's out then for the whole thing.
Right. Now, as a discussion, one must weigh the merits of the two comments made, one by yourself and one by the chairman.
Yeah.
One is very much more, in my opinion, more biased than the other.
Yeah.
And the applicant has not voiced opinion or voiced opposition to the comments that were deemed biased against him.
So.
So what I'm, what it comes down to is.
This is a first for me.
One comment saying, this is quite the letter, or words to that effect, to another one, which was a much longer dissertation as to.
Oh, well, not good, yeah. All right, well, I guess so, so it's been moved and seconded.
So my second was based on the fact that Gooch is not here and I thought that we were trying to, if we were going to, you know, make a vote on it tonight, that we would be able to do that. If indeed it's okay with the applicant that if we don't do the vote on it this evening and he, being Gooch, our chairman, reviews all of the information, I'm not sure that he should be recused from the second vote if he brings himself up to speed. I'm looking more at it like he's not here and, you know, we're trying to get some business done, but.
Right.
But if it gets to the point where we decide that, you know, we're going to carry this thing over, I think he should probably, if it's okay with the applicant, should have the opportunity to, to vote on it.
You reviewed the, had the comments made by, the email made by Gooch?
Uh huh. My previous comment carries, I believe, more board members participating in the discussions beneficial and I would, it would be my opinion and my preference to have Gooch involved in this discussion as well.
So unfortunately, though, we have a motion, we have a second, we now have to have a vote.
So you can vote in opposition.
Oh, that's right.
All right, so all those in favor of Gooch being recused, raise your hand. All those in favor of Gooch being kept into the conversation, raise your hand.
How about not being recused?
Not being recused, okay.
How about opposed to the motion?
Opposed, opposed to the motion. How about opposed to the motion?
I like that even better. Okay. Check west.
All right. So, so we, we can check that off then as, as done?
Yes, I think we have, well, no, they have one more. Mr. Chairman, I am an employee of Sunday River. I am employed as a capacity of a shuttle bus driver and I put forth to the board that in my capacity, I have no empowerment to affect decisions by management at Sunday River whatsoever. And therefore, I am not in any way affected or by my employment in making a fair and impartial decision on this matter.
Okay.
It doesn't fall under a conflict of interest, I don't think, as the state sees it.
Correct.
No, I don't think so either. All right, so we're good. All right, so we can check that box off and move on. Is any additional escrow needed?
No, I missed one.
What?
Application fee.
I'm looking at this check off list.
The application fee paid, number four.
I'm according to this one.
Do I give you an old copy?
Maybe it's an old copy. Maybe an old copy? Peter, you got any money with you?
I did, I gave it to Joel.
Oh, we added one because of the whole 10-day thing, but.
Has the application fee been paid? There's this one down.
Okay. The one I was going off of was, was out of order, so.
Yeah. I have a check for $4,000, Mr. Vice Chair.
Okay, is there any?
Hang on.
What is the $4,000 based on?
I do not have the fee calculation in front of me.
It's one-tenth of 1%. One-tenth of 1%.
Nowhere in your application have you stated the estimated cost of this project?
I did state the estimated cost of this project somewhere. It may not have been in the draft, but it's definitely in the final copy of the application. There was a letter from, there's a letter here, yeah, it says 4 million.
Yeah.
Which is funded through Boeing, it's a letter.
In Neil's letter?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, there is a conflict here. In the letter submitted to the D E P application, the applicant stated the approximate cost of the project to be $4.5 million. And here in this application, he is stating $4 million, there seems to be a conflict.
Well, is this, are we, are we splitting hairs? I mean, in reality, if it's 4 million, there's a 4.5 million. If there's cost overruns, there's going to be 5 million. If taken in under budget, it's going to be 3.5. I don't know.
I'm just pointing out that, that the, the D E P application stated $4.5 million and now this application is stating $4 million.
Go ahead, Peter.
The D E P application had a letter submitted by Brian Heron and this application has a letter submitted by Neil Scanlon, who's the Vice President of Finance.
I don't, off the top of my head, have a reason for that. The letter for D E P was submitted in.
September?
August or September. We've definitely. We've definitely done a lot of more cost estimating since then. There may have been other things included in that that I don't know. I don't know if the final cost of the lift had been finalized at that time. So I don't, I don't have a good answer for you.
Okay.
Well...
I'm, I'm fine without having to split the hairs for you.
Okay.
So we have a check for $4,000.
Yeah. So the application will be repaid. So is there any additional escrow needed?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, I make a motion that the applicant be required to pay an additional fee to aid the planning board in review of this application as allowed and defined in the UDRO Section 10b6. And that amount will be either 50% of the application fee or $2,500, whichever is greater. In this case, it will be $2,500.
Motion made.
And the reason I, there's enough technical details in this application that I feel that the board should seek outside assistance in reviewing the application and that this escrow will be used to pay for that professional assistance.
I agree. Solid seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? The motion carries.
Well, wait a minute, you gotta vote first.
Oh, yeah, I keep missing out. God, I feel like I'm Gooch. Okay, the motion carries.
It carries, yeah.
I used to this one. So the motion's carried, so, um...
We will need an additional check.
Can you point to the, where in the ordinance that's required?
UDRO, Section 10, paragraph, sub-paragraph B, subsection, or subsection B, sub-paragraph 6.
10b6.
I'm gonna go put this in the safe.
What, what, what number does that be?
10b6.
Good. 10b6.
10b6. And Vs. An application shall be accompanied by, all applications shall be accompanied by an application fee as established by the Select Board payable to the town of Newry. Such fee shall not be refundable. The Planning Board, at its discretion, may require the applicant to pay an additional fee to aid the Planning Board in its review of the applicant's submission. Said additional fee shall be either 50% of the application fee or $2,500, whichever is greater, and should be held in a non-interest-bearing escrow account. If the balance of the account is drawn down by more than 75%, the board shall require 50% of the original additional fee to be paid by the applicant. Any unused portion of escrow account shall be returned to the applicant.
Got it.
Just got your email. Thanks a lot.
Slipped that one in.
So, we moved and seconded, we go on, and we do?
Yeah.
So, um, you will comply?
Bring me more money.
Would you like to know?
It wasn't me.
Would you like to know what the escrow amount is right now that, in our account that we have for you?
Uh, yeah, separate discussion. At some point, I'd like to get, like, statements at some interval on that account, just so I know what's in there.
Talk to Loretta.
All right, will do.
Thank you.
Um, inform the, form, inform applicant that all revised or additional documents, plans must be submitted to the Planning Board for review at least 10 days prior to the board's meetings in which the information will be discussed. I believe that information was distributed and received.
Anything resulting from this meeting will have to be remitted and yet to be submitted within 10 days of our next meeting.
Next meeting, right, right. So...
That's just informative.
So is the motion, was that a motion?
Nope. That's, that's just informing the applicant of our procedures.
So we don't have to move forward on that one? Has the application fee been paid? Paid, yes. $4,000, what was it, just $4,000?
Yes. I can't open this. Wonder.
Um, assign an application number. I have the last one, which was 23274, so this application should be, I don't believe there's anything pending.
Should be 275.
Application 23-275. Is the application complete?
So something that's not on the checklist, because it was just sort of always the way we did it, was generally the applicant starts off with a description?
That's, that's what comes up now.
Yes, but Bruce was heading into application complete when we...
Right, well, before we do, now we're into the discussion section, which allows the...
I'm just gonna vote this as I am.
Allows the applicant to submit his application.
Um, is the application complete?
Well, we're not there yet.
All right, like I say, I'm, I'm just reading what's on this thing here, so then...
Now we have to review the application, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
And we start that off by listening to the app.
All right, Peter, you're up. All right, applicant, Peter Roberts, on behalf of Sunday River Skiway Corporation, this application is for a second chairlift on the Merrill Hill development. Provisions were made for this chairlift in the last phase with easements that were put in place on the existing development, and so we're proposing a new chairlift and three new ski trails, two new ski bridges, which cross Morganite Way.
Two or one?
Two.
Your project description said one.
Is it?
Okay, two.
Okay.
And how many new associated ski trails? Because your application says one.
I guess I screwed that up.
Three?
Yep.
Thank you.
Now, have you, did you bring in anything different? You said what I already have here?
I don't think that we revised anything. We just signed and stamped everything.
Okay. So the application that I received prior to the meeting is still, still valid? Still the, and the, a magic copy, I should say?
Until I revise it with all the stuff you picked out and throw in.
Right, right, I understand that.
When you do revisions, can you sign, sign it with a, the next day?
Yep.
Tell the difference about which one, which?
Does that get signed at each revision?
We will sign that it wouldn't as if we were doing a pre-conference. A pre-application, pre-application conference, I'm not getting the words right, but whatever.
Do you have a generic letter of agency from Sunday River on file? And is it still valid?
We did that at one point.
We did. Several applications deed probably, but yes, we do have one. We can probably just dig that out of email.
Yep.
Thank you. Is that number 11? Is that what you're referring to?
Uh, that would be, that would be 11 through 14.
Okay.
So my understanding of that was that that section is only applicable if the owner of the project is hiring a consultant to represent them. Whereas I'm an employee of the owner slash applicant. So if I need to fill that out differently in the future, just let me know.
As an employee, I still believe you need agency from the corporation in this case, stating that you are representing them.
Okay.
Simply being an employee. Otherwise, I could be sitting in your seat.
Oh, yeah.
Doing your job for you.
Makes sense.
Let's talk about that later.
Not, nowhere near, as well.
He's got an offer.
And now I'd have to recuse myself because I'd be in conflict of interest. So if I recall correctly, then all the upper lots at Merrill Hill have an easement associated with their deed that allows for the ski trail and a chairlift to go across them?
Yes.
And therefore, you did not include them as an abutter?
No.
Because of that easement?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, there is one other property, Ski and TLLC, which was not included in your abutters' list. Is there a reason for that?
Which lot is that?
It's this one right here, Peter. 13A. It's the one that got logged last year.
40 acres?
It's in between the two Morganite entrances.
Um, if that wasn't included, that was a mistake.
So the, as far as the abutters go, then it's got nothing to do with where we are? Is it just a direct abutment or...
Well, they're, they need to be on the list of the abutters, and they're not.
That is a point of discussion and interpretation of the UDRO, I believe. So...
As to whether or not you and I are abutters?
Correct. Well, at least one of us. So if, if you do a strict interpretation of the UDRO and you go by the lot line, there is a, oh, heck, a lot of the abutters. Because, Joel, can you show us the...
I'm doing the line. Is that what you want?
No, no, what is Lot 2A3, which is part of 2A1, which is part of 2A...
I can't highlight all of those lots?
Yeah, no, you can't.
But I can do this. So 2A3, which is this.
Right.
2A2. As soon as this populates, there we go. And then we've got Lot 2, which runs along the river, as well as, this is Lot 1, I believe, on map 17.
And then, and then you got...
These are all in tree growth.
And then you've got 13 on the other side, on the, down by Upper Road. So if, if all those, those are by the tax...
They're all taxed together. They are separate lots by deed. I'm sure they're probably defined as parcel 68, parcel 69, parcel 70, but, um, they're, we tax them all as one because they're in tree growth.
Okay.
So they're, in order to develop this lot, it's got to come out of tree growth.
Okay.
This is the acreage. And I'll have you talk to the assessor about that. I don't know anything about it, except that it's in tree growth.
So one option, Bruce, is that we have to draw the, the thousand-foot line all the way around parcel 2A3. Joel, 2A3.
Yep. That would be a, around the whole property line or just the...
No, just 2A3. It should come up as, it should be able to highlight it if you go to the information box. So that's 2A3.
Okay.
And then also Lot 13.
If I could shift and turn it...
Which I don't know if, again, I don't know if 13 actually applies or not.
Sorry, it covers it up. There we go.
I don't know if the new, if you have any new trails on 13 or not. But anyway, if you just take 2A3 and do a thousand-foot, my abutters list to that...
If I was just take it from this corner, let's say.
You're going to include a lot of other properties. Basically, all of Mahusak Glen. All of Village on the Green.
So that's that direction. Clear.
And Mr. Roberts has made an argument in the past that for a site plan application, it might be more logical to narrow it down to the site, to the actual site that's being developed, i.e. when we did the pump house.
Yeah.
And we approved that it was, makes sense for Sunday River to notify all the abutters from all the massive amount of property that they cover for that pump house, and therefore we do a thousand-foot line around the location of the pump house and use that as the abutter list. So another, another option is to take the approximately, the approximate lift line that Joel has just drawn in with red and to draw a thousand-foot perimeter, so you end up with an oval that goes 1,000 feet above that. And I think the, abutters list that you submitted, Peter, with the exception of Ski and T, is all, includes even more than needed to be...
The interpretation that we've gone with in the past, especially in these bigger parcels, is that we did 1,000 feet from the work site. And so if the board is going to change that interpretation, that's...
Wasn't, isn't that what I just said? If you take 1,000 feet either side of that red line, which is the work site, your lift line, or actually, you got the trails in there too. I was just looking at the lift line.
Well, my, I guess, I, I'm confused, because before that, it seemed like you were saying that we would use 1,000 foot from the...
And that's one alternative, not one in favor.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I...
I guess I'm lost. Did I, did I not notify the correct abutters, other than the one lot that seems to be omitted?
If we, if we go with what we've done in the past and go with 1,000 foot from the sites of construction, and you probably included the trails in there, the only abutter that you did not notify, by my review, is Ski and TLLC.
Which is Lot 13A, yeah.
Assuming that, uh, the only other one would be any lower lots which are, don't have easement to the ski amenities of Merrill Hill.
Okay, so what's the request from the board?
The request of the board is that you missed one of the abutters.
Okay. Got it. I will send them a letter.
Make all that short and sweet.
Can I just ask a question? Or is it totally impossible to ask a question? Because I think we're, like, missing something here, but...
Sir, this is...
This isn't the public hearing yet.
Point of order, this is a working session of the Planning Board, and while the public is encouraged to attend, take notes, but unfortunately...
That's okay, that's okay.
Yeah, there will be time and place for this to happen.
Okay, no problem.
But there seems to be, there has been a lot of stuff that the Planning Board has done that hasn't been public either.
Again, this is a working session of the Planning Board.
I heard it, you don't have to repeat it.
And comment, it's okay. Let's see.
So is the, the application complete?
Not yet. We still got other things to go down with yet.
I'm just going by what I'm going by the checklist going down.
Are you happy with the application?
Not yet.
Yeah, you have to, you have to look at all that.
We'll go through the application.
We can skip around, we don't necessarily...
No, we're not skipping around, we're going through the application.
You're putting this aside while you make sure this is complete?
You're putting this aside while you make sure this is complete.
Oh, okay.
There you go.
Thank you. Where's the?
And Peter, item number thirty-two, as per my motion earlier, if you would please highlight the deed or quitclaim deeds.
Yep.
And easements that apply so that, uh, we can quickly research that without having to read forty-eight pages of recorded in the registry of deeds.
Yep.
See, we already talked about item thirty-four, Mr. Chairman, attached to this the names of butters. And we have one that needs to be notified.
Yep.
So, Peter, I have a question about number thirty-six.
Yep.
No bathroom in the lift for lifties?
No.
Okay.
What would you do, just have a little more potty or something like that on site?
Um, I guess that's an interesting thing to bring up that I hadn't thought about, but we have a lot of lifts that are isolated and typically try to just rotate somebody in on a break once every hour, every two hours, so they can get somewhere with a bathroom. Aurora, I guess, comes to mind.
That's helpful.
Down to number forty, Peter. Part of this application is going on land outside of the Merrill Hill subdivision. Is it not?
Yes.
Do you or does the applicant have any plans on dedicating recreation or common land for use for rec or dedicate any common land for recreational purposes on this? Or is it all gonna be as with Merrill Hill easements?
Well, in my past experience, number forty um, spoke to like if we were applying for density credits to do, um, to exceed the town's, uh, dwelling unit density requirements, we would preserve common or public space off-site. Um, so that's my interpretation of how that works, but we don't have a firm commitment yet on what we're gonna do with that property.
Okay, and.
And then we're talking about the properties in tree growth.
Yep.
And there was, there was no, is there any common area in Merrill Hill subdivision?
Not that I'm aware of.
There, yeah, Bob Metter, uh, um, Lot thirteen.
Thirteen three?
That's shown on there.
Oh, okay.
It was part of Bob Metter's parcel that he subdivided and he dedicated that as common land. When Sunday River Skiway Corporation bought the development from the Metter family.
That was covenanted.
We changed the covenants, so now we are the owner of Lot thirteen.
Thirteen has covenants on it?
Hmm?
Thirteen has covenants on it?
It did at one time. It was part of, it was not dedicated as public common space. It was common space that was to be shared by the owners of the association.
So that covenant was, was removed when, when Sunday River bought it?
Yes.
Okay.
At least that's my understanding.
I know Bob was pretty conservative in a bunch of stuff, so.
Has made the E P approved your application here?
No, we're still working on review of that application.
And for number forty-five, despite questions that they do not anticipate an average daily traffic, uh, do not anticipate the average daily traffic on Monkey Brook to increase as a result of this project because there will be no B K L access to that area?
Forty-five.
Number forty-five. No, forty-two, I'm sorry, forty-two.
Well, I guess that's a little bit more complicated than the answer that I gave. The increase in average daily traffic on Monkey Brook Road was taken under consideration when Merrill Hill was subdivided and approved by the planning board. So as we build out the Merrill Hill subdivision as it's approved now, we do expect the, uh, daily traffic on that road to increase, but not specific to the project that's being reviewed now. That was already anticipated as part of the Merrill Hill subdivision. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Related to vehicular traffic is foot traffic. Uh, Sunday River has, in the past, parked customers in the golf course.
Mm-hmm.
And on what used to be a snowplow turnaround uh, uphill of the golf course entrance. Is it a fair assumption that they will continue to do that in the future?
Well, I don't think that that's related to this project.
Um, okay, well.
There, there are plans in place to deal with some of the parking struggles that we've had on the Saturdays this winter.
Um, there's also a subdivision called Mahusak Glen.
Mm-hmm.
That is close to the base terminal, to your proposed base terminal. Is it conceivable that individuals will slide down at the end of the day to the base terminal of this proposed lift? And then walk to wherever they're residing in Mahusak Glen or future subdivisions in that area?
Um, I don't think that's something we could prevent from happening.
At the same, at the same time, foot traffic on Monkey Brook Road, is that a desirable or undesirable situation for the skiway?
In general, foot traffic, like in the summertime, um, year-round?
Specifically, as my scenario was that individuals at the end of the day or any time during the day slide down to the terminal, lift terminal base that you're proposing. And get on and decide to walk to wherever they're residing or staying in Mahusak Glen, or do their car that's parked up at the golf course or in that, uh, non-approved parking lot up road of the golf course?
Well, that's down a trillion, so that's, that's pretty much a ways away to be walking uphill.
Well.
No, but you're a twenty-five-year-old guy and you know it's gonna be quick and easier. Rather than hop on a shuttle that takes, you know, twenty minutes to get around. Hey buddies, let's it's, and it's a private road, but it's something that was a concern when we're, when we're driving around up there on a winter day.
Yeah.
So i- if your question is, will we advertise that you can ski back to your car?
Oh, I know that can answer.
That, that's a hard no.
What I'm saying is that there will be foot traffic on Monkey Brook Road because of that lift being, being installed where you're proposing to be installed.
Okay.
And therefore, uh, there should be accommodations to prevent a dangerous situation of having foot traffic on Monkey Brook Road.
Are you making a request for a change to the application?
I'm hopefully, hoping that you will comport with, without having to do that.
So my question is, what is the parking going to be at the base or the bottom of the hill? On the access from Monkey Brook, what is gonna be the parking situation?
Um, we're not planning to have any parking at the base of this lift. Um, as part of this application, there probably will be some sort of a pullout on the side of the road for a lift maintenance vehicle to park if we have a mechanic who needs to work on the lift.
Why, so is it not, is this the return gonna be down there or is that where?
No, the drive terminal's at the bottom.
It is. So wouldn't that be man?
But we're not, yeah, we're, we're not planning on having like guest parking at the bottom of the lift.
Would there be a driveway to access the base terminal?
Yes, I believe so, yep.
And to accommodate emergency vehicles? Some of the ambulances?
I don't have plans for an emergency vehicle to get up to the lift terminal, no.
Okay. Is it not conceivable that Ski Patrol will have the opportunity from time to time to sled somebody down there for pickup by their vehicle?
Um, yes, we have several spots on the mountain where we can't get an ambulance. Um, and so often what happens is you pack somebody in a sled and then tow them out, such as like an Aurora.
Granted, the AP road is a relatively flat road, minimal grade. You're suggesting that you're gonna do a snowmoto up one of your ski trails to the top of Merrill Hill and then down the other side?
Well, I'm suggesting that that is a way to deal with somebody who's hurt at the bottom of that lift, yeah.
Um, okay. Well, then, that, all right, so besides the danger or the possibility, very good likelihood of pedestrian traffic on Monkey Brook Road because people are going to
They'll figure out.
Park wherever they wanna park.
Well, no, not even park.
But that's.
Or park or walk.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, I think it's unrealistic to assume otherwise, and therefore, uh, as a amendment to the application, I think you should come up with a, a solution to pedestrian traffic from the base terminal up to and including the entrance to the golf course. And even if you don't use the golf course as parking, you still have residential subdivision, Mahusak Glen, and possibly future residential subdivisions. Although they will probably have easements to the ski trail, so I don't need to go there. But Mahusak Glen, you're gonna have, there's the highly, high likelihood of having pedestrian traffic, and therefore I think that, uh, Sunday River Skiway should address that and come up with a resolution.
Um, is there a section in the ordinance that we're discussing right now?
Uh, we can come down with, uh, well, there's a section on driveways because I think you're gonna put a driveway in there where you can get to the lift. There's also just a general provision of condition of approval.
Just out of curiosity, how, far, exactly how far off Monkey Brook is this drive gonna be?
It's about a hundred feet. Excuse me.
Just out of curiosity.
Yeah.
And for the construction, you'll put in a driveway to get there, and then that driveway will become permanent?
Yeah, I believe there's a, um, note on the plans for a temporary construction entrance.
So, Peter, the section?
Mm-hmm.
Is, sorry, let me get back to my table of contents here. Section thirteen X four. Sidewalks and pedestrian easements may be required by the planning board to provide safe and convenient access to common areas, existing roads, playgrounds, or other public and private facilities. You all can. We all know the public will do anything it takes to get on that snow first thing in the morning, so that's.
Off the snow.
Off the snow in the end of the day, and it's just one of those things that, you know, we'd like to see Sunday River consider.
So you'd like me to pay for a sidewalk to a private residential development from the bottom?
I would like for you to accommodate pedestrian traffic that will be on Monkey Brook Road.
Is there a more specific request?
How mu- how many feet was it?
Thirty-eight hundred feet up to that plowed turnaround.
Okay, now the.
Is that just above the entrance to the golf course?
Yes.
The plowed turnaround though, which is on private property, which does not belong to Sunday River. I would, if you want a more refined one, it would be pedestrian traffic from the base terminal up to and including the entrance to the Sunday River Golf Course.
Okay, we'll, um, review internally and come back with a response.
Thank you.
There was discussion that it was for the exclusive use of Merrill Hill.
Yep.
Isn't that the intent?
Um, I don't know where we stand with that discussion. That was discussed at length. Um, that's one of the different scenarios that's been hashed out, but at this time, as far as I know, is intended to be open for the public.
Existing trails are open to the public, are they not?
As, as are the existing trails, yeah. Um, we reserve the right to change that, but that's the current plan.
And, and the proposed trails hook into some of the existing trails?
The proposed trails are extensions of the existing trails.
Extension, so if you have, so if you allow public access to Merrill Hill, they will have access to the, the entire trail network on Merrill Hill?
Yes.
And if you don't allow access to Merrill Hill, then you will have to somehow control access to lift number nineteen, which was the Merrill Hill lift number one. Which I don't believe right now has any R F I D access control on it anyway, right?
Not that I know of, no.
Can you tell me what that stands for?
Uh, radio frequency identification.
Okay, thank you.
Wireless tickets.
Oh, okay, thank you.
You can't, can't talk to anybody up there. I know that for a fact. That's because they de, de-power the, we're selling you power up there.
Also, Peter, while we're on the subject, uh, you will need a, a plan for your driveway entrance to that base lift.
Um, there's a note on the plan that says there will be a old logging road resurrected for construction access. Are you looking for something?
Well, where is that?
Sheet two. I believe there may be one on sheet one as well.
And whereabouts on, is that logging road on sheet two?
Um, what do we have for scale? Probably five hundred feet uphill to the bottom terminal.
It's not drawn on the sheet, is it?
Um, I don't see it.
Call-out note, but not specifically drawn.
Uh, which, which is the call-out note?
Old logging road to be used for construction.
Old logging road to be used for construction access. Uh, and that old logging road, construction access is almost on top of Monkey Brook.
Goes and cross Monkey Brook.
And is above wetlands and is nowhere near the terminal of your lift.
Is there a question in that statement?
Uh, no, it's a statement.
Okay.
In addition to dealing with pedestrian traffic, the, I think the Sunday River Skiway needs to accommodate the ability of getting emergency vehicles, in particular ambulances, to base this lift. Because I think your proposal that they will be towed out of there is unrealistic. I agree with that.
Do you think that's holdout maps in your Bible thing?
Yeah, it's the second one here, the second one from the beginning.
And while you're doing that driveway plan, uh, we would like to see a landscaping plan that provides for buffers and screening from the base. that provides for buffers and screening from the base terminal to the Monkey Brook and the view across the valley to properties, ultimate powder ridge, et cetera. And that would be, uh, section thirteen, subsection A, A, I believe, the UDRO. Buffers and screening standards. Erosion settlement control.
The applications that you assigned and distributed, they don't have the pull-out map that you guys are all looking at.
No, we did those, uh, full-size D-sheet and stamped them.
Oh, so they're over there, okay.
Oh, they're back here. You can see the logging.
I'll just gather full packages.
So the request, if I could get some clarification on the landscaping plan, um, the...
As a condition of approval, I was putting forth that you provide screening and buffers around the lower terminal in accordance with section thirteen, A, of the UDRO.
And which, uh, which part of AA are we?
The entire section.
Concerned about. Okay, so buffers may be considered in or for the following areas and purposes along property lines to shield incompatible uses from each other. Is that the one that we're concerned about?
Uh, let's see. We're on page seventy-two there. Uh, well, you got, you got, uh, sub-paragraph three, buffers in the form of fences, landscaping berms and mounds may be required to minimize adverse impacts or nuisances on the site of, on the adjacent properties. Also, I have six which might be applied there because of, well, it's an exposed service area, it is a service area.
Exposed machinery installation.
So I'm looking, well, I'm looking at the words adverse impact and nuisances. Um, is it the opinion of the board that this will have an adverse impact on, on a butter or a nuisance to a butter?
There is the potential that the viewscape of Merrill Hill will be affected by having this lower terminal erected.
And that's a nuisance or a, what was the other word? Adverse impact?
It's an adverse impact.
Can you describe how it's an adverse impact?
It is, it is this changing and distracting from the existing viewscape that, of Merrill Hill from afar.
So, is the...
You're clearing for it though, right?
Yeah.
So you could leave some road, right? Put any in the plan?
Yeah, if it's delineated, there's...
Buffers shall be sufficient to shield structures and uses from the view of incompatible of budding properties and public roadways.
Well, and that's where, I guess where I'm a little hung up here is incompatible, we're building in the resort development district. Why is a ski chairlift considered incompatible?
But the view impact of Merrill Hill is visible from the general development district and from the rural district.
Now, this is every single other chairlift at the resort, with a couple of exceptions.
The, this chairlift is unique in that it is going over and through and around a subdivision, which none of the other chairlifts do.
Well, I believe one other one does, right?
Which one's that?
Merrill Hill Chairlift Number One.
That doesn't go, the impact of that is minimal because it goes up to lot number three, which I believe you own or has reserved and does not...
It's not viewable for other areas.
It does perhaps impact lot number one and lot number two.
So you're concerned about impacts to the lots on Merrill Hill?
I, I am concerned in that this is a change in existing placement of lifts in that we are now incorporating lifts and trails into residential areas much as in a golf course. Uh, and this is something new for the resort, and therefore, I think it would be good to start off on some good, good grounds.
I guess my, you know, we can sit down and come up with a formal response, but if the expectation of the board is that every chairlift terminal is going to be landscaped and hidden from view by any zoning district outside of the resort development district, I think that's a unreasonable burden to place on the resort. Um, and I think, like, we've discussed at length now, so I, I'm happy to sit down and come up with a formal response, but in short, I think that's...
The other aspect which is related to this is noise. Um, and so a buffer screen will also, and again, this will be the first chairlift that is placed in a residential area. Uh, the drive for lift nineteen is not in a residential area. Uh, and people who buy lots in the Glenit Ridge Run, et cetera, et cetera, do so knowing fully that they are around the ski area. Here we are not. We have lots that are in Mahusak Glen. We have lots at Village on the Green. We have future lots that could be future subdivisions, all which now are gonna, in the past, would have been immune of the hum of the ski resort because of the geographics and the terrain. So now we have a, uh, a chairlift base that is gonna be right in the middle of a residential area or areas. And so, um, performance standard in chapter thirteen, section thirteen, subsection Z for noise needs to be reviewed and adhered to.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, as, uh, at the minimum, I would like to see you put forth more detailed information as to sound levels of the Doppelmeyer lift other than the generic statement that you made in the application that they're super quiet.
Okay, so the noise section, where are we at?
Thirteen, thirteen Z. Oh, I don't know what, uh, in the application.
For noise, number seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine.
Yep.
Okay, yeah, we can include some numbers in that for sure.
I also noticed that you do not have snowmaking on the trails. And that the, uh, will you be coming back to the board at a later date to do that? And if so, why not do it now?
I did not include a line style on the plans for snowmaking now, but yes, there is a plan to include snowmaking on the trails.
Would you like to kill two birds with one stone included in this application?
Yes, my, you know, in my mind, that is assumed, but we can include it in this application. Where would you like to have it added?
Well, it needs to be on the plans. And in your dis, general description?
That stuff is noisy.
Unfortunately, that's exempt from the noise hazards, but... And you're not proposing night skiing on these?
Not at this time, no.
Yeah. And so the only lighting then would be light, the normal lighting of the base and, and top terminal.
Yeah, typically there's, um, interior lighting in the terminal itself, and then interior lighting of the operator house, and usually one external light fixture next to the door, such as you would have on a residential building.
And where will the power be coming from?
Um, there's thirty-four, five KV, uh, three-phase power on Monkey Brook Road, so we'll just do a riser pole and bring power right off the roof there.
Shouldn't that be on the plan as well then?
You'd like to see the riser pole on the plan?
I'd like to see, I think the, I think that's a part of the, part of the infrastructure plan that's required in the application.
Okay.
And also, I don't think, I don't see any details on the overpasses. You provided much more detail in your previous application for the first set of ski trails and the overpass.
What, uh, what type of information are you guys looking for?
Well, if we are going to have an inspector inspect your, inspect the project, there needs to be a standard for them to say, yes, it's been built according to the plan.
What specifically are you looking for?
I would, well, for life safety stuff mainly, if these don't collapse on skiers, I'd like to just see, you know, rebar, concrete, what the design of, I mean, I know what they look like now, standing up there, but I, I don't know how they were constructed.
If you, if you review your, the application submitted back in twenty-twenty, there's a, it's much more complete than this application. And it does show details to the appearance and construction of the...
Yeah, I'll take a look, I'll take a look at it. Um, in my, like, in my mind, the way to handle this would be to have a condition of approval that shop drawings for the bridges are submitted to Joel as they come in. Um, like, the final design of the bridge is not complete. The bridge is probably going to change a little bit as we go through the engineering of the different bridge components. Um, so if you're looking for a complete submittal package with all the shop drawings and everything, I don't think that's going to be available until we're in the process of construction. If there's, uh, standards that the town ordinance requires for ski bridge...
For instance, in your previous application, uh, the review pointed out that the proposed height of the bridge did not meet town standards and therefore had to be elevated another foot. To accommodate fire vehicles?
I did not, so, I did not present the application for the other one. I could dig it up and look at it if you'd like to. Um, if there's specific things that I'm missing, I'm happy to write it down and include it in the next go-around.
In general, I would review that application because just, it was much more informative in reviewing that one than, than what you presented to the board tonight in the way of plans and particularly, principally, plans.
Erosion control also in that other one is very detailed. There's a full-size sheet of how everything was gonna be taken care of. I like that plan.
I believe that was included in this.
Yeah, there is an erosion, the last, very last page of pull-out, Joel. Erosion control procedures.
So Ted, I guess I'm looking for, like, what was it about Joe's application three years ago that you specifically wanna see here? Is it, you wanted everything formatted the same way Joe did, or...
The, for one thing, uh, I had, I can't speak for the other board members, I had great difficulty getting the fifty-thousand-foot view out of a two rather small, incomplete tapos with, with writing on them as compared to what was submitted in the previous, on your previous application back in twenty-nineteen, where you have much bigger drawings showing the actual trails and whatnot so that, uh, laypeople like myself and the other board members can look at it and get...
Perspective.
Get the picture that you want us to get.
Well, if, so if the, if the plot size is an issue, I'm happy to print you guys' stuff in D-sheet and bring it in.
It's the plot size and the detail.
And that's what I'm trying to hash out, Ted, is what, what details are you looking for that I missed?
Well, the other one showed, actually had a insert of a, of the overpass, and granted, it didn't have all the specifics, but it's, you know, it said, uh, pre-stressed concrete slabs, and it had the height over the road, and showed a rough picture of the embankments and whatnot, so that, again, we had a, we have a feel for what you're proposing to put in there.
So you want like an elevation section view of the bridge? So we provided a typical grading plan, um, and if you're looking for something different than that, I guess I need to know specifically if you want something in isometric, if you want, like, if the, if the overhead clearance is your big concern, if that's what you're looking for? So, uh, one other, hold on, one other alternative to, I have all the shop drawings from the other bridges we did. I don't know if it makes sense to submit those and say, these are typical of what we generally expect to see up there, minus some changes for different...
That might...
Does that make sense?
That might, that might work.
I just wanna confirm that they, the fire truck will go under it.
Yep, yeah. Okay, so if that's acceptable, I guess what I would do, um, is bring up, find shop drawings, um, from, and engineer drawings from one of the bridges that we did previously.
And again, I'm not looking to go overkill, but if you take a look at, at what Mr. Alazio submitted in the previous one, you'll see some things which we're missing in this application, which make it, just makes it easier for us on the board to look and grasp what you're, what it is that you're putting forth.
Well, so, but what I'm saying is like me looking at Joe's plans versus you looking at Joe's plans. I'm gonna look at Joe's plans and say, all right, here we go, it's the same thing. So I guess if you have specific things on Joe's plans that you liked and wanted to see, just like...
The only specific one that I noticed was that, that there was a little more detail on the overpasses and what they would entail and what they were, what they would... Uh, and I realize that at this point, after you've built several of them, they're crystal clear in your mind, they're not so much in ours.
Okay. Okay, so I'll include, I'll resubmit more detail on the bridges.
Okay. And while it's not part of the application, it will be part of the approval, and that is a performance guarantee, which is detailed in chapter twenty-one, twenty-three, twenty-three. Yeah, anyway. And so unless you wanna put, put up ten percent of four million dollars for a performance guarantee, we need to have a little better breakdown, itemization of your construction cost.
Hmm?
Or the town will be happy to take, earn interest on ten percent of four million dollars while it's in escrow.
So what's, um... So what's, um, what's the request here? You're looking for a more detailed budget for the project?
The performance guarantee requires, and it's something that cannot be weighed by the board, that in your case, as a private development of private roads, that you put forth ten percent of the infrastructure cost.
Okay.
As a performance guarantee. Uh, now, the easiest way to do that is just put forth ten percent of four million dollars.
Yep.
Which is fine, or if you wanted to, you know, take out some of the, the cost of building your trails and just itemize the, the cost of your infrastructure, you may be able to reduce the amount of the performance guarantee that needs to be put forward.
Just remember, you have an certified check.
No, there are, that's only one option, there are other options in detail in the UDRO.
So I heard a lot of maybes in there, what's the, what's the specific request?
The specific request is that the board is going to require a performance guarantee.
Got you. So you want me to return at the next meeting with a plan for some sort of performance guarantee that conforms with the section of the ordinance?
Well, the performance guarantee has to be paid no later than five days before you start construction.
Yep.
And it needs to be something that the board has reviewed and is comfortable with and approves.
But you want me to come back with a plan for you to review and approve, is what you're trying to say?
I want you to give us the numbers so that we can sit there and say, okay, this is what we need for a performance review.
So you're going to tell me what you need for a performance review, I need to give you the budget so you can make that determination?
You can help us out by telling, by differentiating the cost and coming up with a cost for the infrastructure.
So you're looking for a detailed budget for, what I need to come back with in two weeks is a detailed budget for the project, I don't need to come back with a plan for a performance guarantee that's determined by you three?
The, well, I think in those two weeks, they'll give you an opportunity to review the conditions of a performance guarantee and the various methods of satisfying that performance guarantee.
But what I'm trying to say is.
And we will need a dollar amount for what is classified as infrastructure. And this is your opportunity to propose to the board what you deem to be infrastructure. Right now, all we know is the total cost of the plan, we do not have any breakdown, which, again, is also something that I believe is required in the application.
So you're not, but I'm, I'm trying to get some clarity here, you're not looking for me to come back with a plan for a performance guarantee for you to approve, all you want from me is.
I want a breakdown of the cost of this project.
That's all.
So that we can, together, or at the minimum, the board will come up with a performance guarantee amount that you must.
Okay, got you.
And that'll help determine whether it's four million or four and a half million.
Yeah.
Or, or two, or two million, because we're only talking about infrastructure, so, yeah, that'll be up to them to, yeah.
Well, let Randy or Bruce have it. We're still reviewing the application, right, we're still going through the.
So the plan that I'm here, Peter?
Those are the full-size sheets.
Those are the full-size sheets, right, so how many pages per?
Four pages, and there should be three sets in there.
Three sets of four pages.
Is that just the blown-up size of what you put in the binder?
Yep.
Right, because the binders that I have.
The binders that got submitted don't have plans.
Right. What number you have to? Two. I have one and four.
Here's two.
Four of four, three.
Four.
Okay, here's a, here's a set. One of four, two of four, three of four, four of four, give us a set.
Give us a set.
Okay, okay, I'm taking a set. This is a signed copy? There we go. They're rusty, but they're, you're welcome to.
Oh, it's okay.
I just have it right in this.
Okay.
What number are you guys up to?
Oh, I think you've jumped all over the place.
Okay.
I think I've, I've pretty much gone through mine.
So I guess, Peter, just to be specific about the bridges.
Mm-hmm.
Yet that could go under, um, number seventy-six. It says buildings, but I don't know where else we would put that.
Okay.
So just out of curiosity, what is one million, one hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-six square feet an acreage? Don't have that on the top of your head?
Say, I'm not that good at math.
I'm, I'm just curious, because I see on the next page, you know, three and a half acre, twenty-two acres.
All right, read it off again.
One million, one hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-six square feet.
Yeah, because that's number seventy, that's what it asks for, is the square footage.
Twenty-five point six acres? That sounds like it's in a Ray-Ball park.
Yeah, okay, so it's, well, because on the other side, there just says non-revegetated three and a half, and then revegetated twenty-two and a half, and that would be equal to twenty-five acres or something, I'm, I'm just curious, you know, and what that, because I, I couldn't, I couldn't put into my mind, you know, what that, what that is, you know, is that the?
Physical space, yeah.
Yeah.
Because I'm cheap and haven't reprinted it.
Oh.
But it's the, it's the updated version, yeah. Like, I print that with all this paper. Just want to let you guys know that we were notified, fire chief, myself, road commissioner, we were all notified, we have the official letters here in front of what should have been gooch.
Sheriff's Department.
Sheriff's Department, yeah.
Did the road commissioner respond, or not?
Nope, nope, nothing from me, and that one too. Private room.
Peter, the fill for these bridges, is it being trucked in, and how, so how much fill are you estimating to be trucking in?
Um, I would very likely assume we're trucking in some, most, or all of it, um, and I can come up with a cubic yardage for you if you'd like.
Is that coming out of the pit?
Yes, it would probably come out of the pit, the pit of despair.
So the traffic will start again. Okay, um, will, will the, will the town be requiring a bond for that commercial, for that unusual traffic when town loses?
On Sunday River Road? I don't know that answer right now, and that's something I have to discuss with the select board.
So what we need is cubic yardage, and then divide that by.
What, ten-yard trucks?
Whatever a triaxle carries.
Or fourteen yards.
Allowing a pledge factor. Which will then give us a fair number of total truck, truck traffic to be expected.
And can we include hours of operation of that truck traffic?
And that's already included in the, well, under the UDRO, we cannot regulate truck traffic, we can regulate the loader that loads to truck, but we can't regulate truck traffic, and the loader that loads to truck can't start before seven o'clock in the morning, if I remember correctly.
Yep, seven to seven.
How long has that one been in?
What, the UDRO?
Yeah, how long has that one been on the UDRO?
The last reiteration would have probably been at the minimum, two thousand nineteen, could have gone in then two thousand nine.
Why are the trucks starting at six in the morning, delay, I mean, you know.
They could have been loaded the night before, I don't know.
Now, the trucks can come to the job site before seven o'clock.
Yes.
The loader can't load them until seven o'clock. When are you looking to start this?
Soon as we have permits.
So immediately then?
Yeah.
Do you have an estimate as DEP indicated anything?
Um, we asked.
Three weeks, six weeks?
No, it's going to be a little while, we asked them to defer this project in favor of another one, so they've been kind of backburnered this one to review another project, and we're hopefully very soon going to flip-flop and get approval for another project and get this one back on the front burner.
Okay, would that be the project that I got an email about today?
Yep.
Okay, we'll talk about that under reports.
Perfect.
We'd like to be operational for next year?
Yep.
So, you are, Peter, you are, we're in section ten, B twelve, B, applicant shall prove receipt of all applicable state, federal, and other required permits prior to approval denial from the planning board.
Hold on, what am I going to do with that time?
Page thirty-eight, section ten, B twelve, B.
Um, generally, so generally what we've done in the past is placed a condition of approval on the town, like, all this permitting stuff basically has circular logic where everybody won't approve you until everybody else has approved you, and so generally we'll condition the approval that all other permits have to be in place before the start of construction, does that make sense?
That's not how the UDRO reads.
Can you, uh, I, I'm, I don't know if my page numbers are different from you, I have a twenty-nineteen revision.
And we're in section ten.
Mm-hmm.
Subsection B, procedure.
Yep.
Paragraph, subparagraph twelve, and under twelve, subparagraph B. And I quote, applicant shall prove receipt of all applicable state, federal, and other required permits.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to get through the application process and review the criteria for approval, and if the board is not comfortable with putting a criteria of approval, that we need to receive state permits before we start construction, then we can come back and sign at a later date.
All right, well, the caveat to that is that, uh, you, there will be no approval or denial, there will be tabled.
So Ted, we've gone through this in the past, we've, I'd have to dig up the applications, but I'm reasonably confident we've placed conditions.
The past is water under the bridge, I'm looking at what the UDRO says. The, you, the applicant may perhaps request a waiver, in which case the board will then consider that request and decide what, whether or not to deviate from how the ordinance is written.
Yeah, let's, yeah, we'll put some thought into that.
That would go under number eighty-one.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the application as submitted is incomplete, and that we allow the applicant time to review, amend, and resubmit the application at the earliest at our next meeting of fifteen March, twenty-twenty-three. I'll second that.
Ready, second to that, it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? Are we not all in favor? So moved.
Okay, I've got twelve minutes to finish the rest of the business for tonight, we told you we have to go into next two hours.
Yeah.
So is Peter all set?
Yes.
Can I, um, really quick read through my list and see if I missed anything? Okay, thank you, Ted doesn't look happy.
Well, we just want to make sure.
Ted, this is literally all your stuff.
I know.
All right, number one, the project description needs to be revised, it says one trail, one bridge.
Yes.
Number two, the hundred and seventy-two acre parcel thirteen, um, I think it was, is entry growth, uh, needs to be addressed with the tax assessor.
Yeah, I don't think that it has anything to do with the application, but yes.
It does not, but just point of order for you guys, you'd get big trouble if you start building without that.
Got it. Um, number three, we're going to highlight which parcels in the deed that was attached are relevant to the application. Number four, additional fees being required by the planning board, I need to talk to Alarita about what's actually in our escrow account and possibly bring another check.
Yes, please.
Um, number five, I need a letter of authorization to represent Sunday River at the planning board.
The one that you have on file is not current.
Yes, true.
Uh, number six, we missed one person in the butter list, we'll send them a letter. Number seven, there is a request from the planning board for pedestrian provisions on the Monkey Brook Road between the bottom of the new lift and the golf course. Number eight, there is a request from the planning board for ambulance access to the bottom of the chairlift. Number nine, there is a request from the planning board for a landscaping plan to buffer views and prevent noise. Um, number ten, um, noise data for the new lift needs to be submitted for number seventy-nine on the application. Number eleven, we need to include snowmaking on the plans. Number twelve, we need to include the utility riser pole on the plans. Number thirteen, review Joe's application, more detail on the bridges. Number fourteen, um, the board intends to require a performance guarantee, so they need a budget with the value of infrastructure in the project. Number fifteen, uh, volume of fill estimated for the bridge. Um, number sixteen, um, the criteria of approval requires state approval prior to town approval, so we need to address that somehow with a waiver or something else. What else did I miss?
That sounds good.
You can be a good secretary.
Maybe I'll choose that in the way.
Next slide.
The bond for potential damage to town roads, is that a?
It's going to go on the agenda for the next select board meeting.
Okay, so that's a select board vote commissioner.
Yes.
Item.
I'm their eyes and ears, but they get the final say. So I'll send that before I leave, because I'll forget.
All right, next item on the agenda. What's that?
Yeah.
Thank you, Peter.
Yep, thanks, guys.
Thanks, Peter.
Thanks, Peter, appreciate it.
Want to be added to the March fifteenth agenda?
Yes.
He's going to have two applications on the March fifteenth agenda? I got that email sitting here.
Well, at least I got some good stuff to go off of, so the next one will be more complete.
Awesome.
All right.
So.
Mr. Chairman, we are now on to reports, I believe. So, Mr. Chairman, we are now on to reports, I believe.
Oh, is that enough? I don't know, I'm tired.
Number five, reports, any reports?
I've been notified by Sunday River Ski Resort Corporation that they will have another application for a ski lift at our 15th meeting, March 15th meeting.
Oh, joy.
A ski lift?
Another ski lift.
Another one?
Yeah, I will have all that, I'm not in this office tomorrow, I'm in training, I will try to forward an email.
That's probably the replacement to Barker.
Will you show me how to log into that?
You should be able to just click it and it'll come up on your browser.
Okay, it did on my phone, so I'll, I'll check on the computer tonight.
It's, it's an open link that should be, you should be able to forward it to them, and they can click on it too.
Perfect.
If you do something like about a three-person lift over the acres and the, oh, the, the canyons, then we can, then we might be working.
You got off the hook for being biased.
Is it lying down to Bruce's house?
Yeah.
We'll talk about that after.
Anything else, Drew, on reports?
No, not that's coming directly at me right now, no.
Okay, so we got, for the next agenda, we have-
We have Merrill Hill Lift, we will have a Barker Lift, and that's it. And we'll have to sign the findings of facts for Chase Hill.
Chase Hill.
We got three items.
And nothing else as of?
Yeah. March 15. Yes, March 15. So when you do the next agenda-
Where's the motion?
For voting.
What?
No, we still got open discussion.
Okay.
So you can find one open more.
Is there any open discussion?
Randy, you have anything to-
I have though. All right, next scheduled meeting will be March 15, 2023, at 1800 hours at the New York Town Office.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn the planning board meeting for March 1st, 2023, and reconvene on six o'clock on March, six o'clock in the evening.
Thank you.
March 15th, 2023.
Oh, yeah, military time, I know.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Any discussion? Are we done? Motion passed.
And we are adjourned?
And we are adjourned.
I don't need the website up though, right? No, no, I need to be able to copy this.
Yeah, I've loaded 1800 because I, I don't know why, I don't remember military time. But I live by the-
1500, do you remember?
Sorry, because that was dinner time.
So.
You read my letter? I'm sorry to have to make that motion with email, but-
No, you don't want-
It's a matter of dog eyes, probably.
I'm, I am, and I am totally, I'm on board with that, absolutely, I don't have any issue with that at all.
Save that?
Uh, yeah, because I haven't gotten to-
Right, yep.
You know, and if I had to have recuted myself, I would have, you know? I guess I didn't really, you know, I just kind of like, I suppose neither was Gooch, so.
Neither was Gooch, although, although you could argue that Gooch was a little less-
In all fairness, but I'm, I'm- So is this, we can't talk about this, is that any-
No, we can't talk about it.
Nope, we're all done talking.
We're all done talking, fine, so if you can talk about how the maple sugaring is done.
It's not, so I will give this back to whoever gave it to me with that there for all the motions that I've written, I will checklist so we can continue with that.
Yeah.